All right, well, good evening and welcome to the October work session for Wasika Public Schools Board of Education. Today is Thursday, October 6, 2022. It is 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room. So tonight is our monthly workshop. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Hespeth to get our agenda started.
Great, yeah, thanks. I think we have some, some real productive and exciting things to talk about this evening. We'll start with our staff spotlight for the month. And this month, we have Anna Pollak. Anna, do you want to come join us at the table up here? So she's going to tell us a little bit about what's going on with Wasika Theater and how things are progressing with her and her work with our kids. It's been a pretty exciting opportunity to watch things evolve over the past several months and year. And under her leadership, I think we're in, we're in good hands for continuing to grow that program. So I'll let you take, you can just talk about what you do and how you do it, and then go from there.
Thank you. That was very sweet. Thank you. Yeah, I'm Anna Pollak. I'm the drama director at the high school. So I'm a graduate of Wasika. I graduated in 2012. So it's really exciting to be back after kind of a winding path. I went out of state for a couple of years, was up in the Twin Cities, working in a bunch of different kind of media places, and then found myself back through Lead for Minnesota, if you guys have heard of that. And I just kind of found this passion for really devoting a lot of my time to my hometown that raised me and caring a lot about the students that are in this program. And so last year, in winter, I decided to do the one act, and that was 25 minutes of a show, so not a lot. And then, pretty much immediately after that, was asked to do the full-fledged musical. So it was a big jump, but Legally Blonde last spring was just, you know, it's kind of silly sometimes to say things like life-changing or best experience of my career. It was all those things. It was really, really wonderful. And so, yeah, the kids that I work with are so incredible. They're so passionate about theater and about telling stories, telling good stories to the community in a facility that is wonderful, is state-of-the-art, is something that this community rallied behind. And I am so excited and privileged to be able to work in it. So what we have coming up, you know, after Legally Blonde, came down to understanding kind of some of the budgets and financing that goes into theater. It is not a cheap hobby to have. And so with that, I've created a booster program that acts very similarly to the band boosters, but is for our theater, not only just in the high school, but in the community as a whole. So this booster program, we just got our 501(c)(3) status this summer. And we are soon, we'll be able to accept donations, very soon, not quite yet. But we'll be able to accept donations, and those donations will go towards licensing costs for a musical every single year. The school has graciously offered to provide funding for a musical every other year, and we think the hunger's there. So we'll be doing one every single year, along with support for our community theater in the summer with our Little Rascals, our four through eight grades. And then also to start, potentially start a community theater initiative in town. Last summer, we had a community kind of initiative behind Imaginary Invalid, and we want to keep that train going. We want there to be funding for those who might want to be a part of theater, who might want to be a part of the arts in some way in town. So, yeah, so every year, we have three productions: a fall play, a one-act, which is a part of the Minnesota State High School League competition one-acts, and then our spring musical. This year, we're doing Little Women for our fall play, November 17 through 20 at the PACC. And then our one-act play is going to be How to Succeed in High School Without Really Trying, which is a play off of the musical, even though one-acts don't have musicals, don't have any music in them. And then our spring musical this year is going to be Mamma Mia. So we really wanted to pick things that not only highlight the talent that we have in our schools right now, but also acts that will bring people together and hopefully maybe even bring in some communities from outside of Wasika to come and see our gorgeous theater and our gorgeous renovation of the high school. So, yeah, that's where we're at. And if there's any questions or anything?
Love it, all of it. So, yeah. Anyone have comments or questions? Or I feel like Dave wants to say something, but no.
No, I just, I just think it's really neat that we're going to have a booster club for theater because we've had one for athletics for a long time, and that's all good, you know, and for the band boosters, and that's all good. And now we can have one for theater too. So that's good also.
Yeah, so it's all definitely started based off of the band boosters and their success. They have been such a great impact on that community, so, yeah.
And you've also started a drama club, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. So our drama club, yeah, we've started. We meet with the students twice a month, so it's very, very similar to this, a meeting and a workshop. Just this week, we had our first workshop where we had a community member, Hannah Byron, who's also a graduate of Wasika. She's done a lot of work with sketch comedy in Chicago with Second City. And so she came and did a workshop on sketch writing, sketch comedy writing that the kids just loved. So that was one that we did. Moving forward, we're going to be partnering a lot with the Historical Society, especially with Little Women. There's an employee that works there that did a 1956 production of Little Women and played Hannah, the maid. So that's a cool connection. So the Historical Society will probably be bringing out some props for us and some costumes for us to learn from. So that will be a workshop that we're having in November, along with the meetings and really putting the leadership back in the kids to say, what do we want this program to look like? How do we want to promote it? How do we want the community to receive it? And who can we partner with along the way to make sure that we're not doing this in a silo? Yeah, the drama club is an exciting addition as well, at that, we'll, you know, sometimes partner with the 501(c)(3) in terms of funding, and if they are, if there's anything that they're looking to do. My head immediately goes to theater across the state, Chan-Hassen, Faribault, Paradise Theater, the Fairmont Opera House. There's so much rich theater history in this state, and so I want us, us kids to be able to view it.
Yeah, that's exciting. It's a lot of fun.
That's way more than what I was thinking it was going to be. That's really cool.
Yeah.
It's really nice to see some of the kids are in them and how they grow, you know, they're able to get up on stage. Where I'm a star leader too, and we've got a couple of kids that have done some stuff, and it's really seeing, seeing them grow.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, I could get all heady about theater and how it really dissects our relationships with others and ourselves. I think it's a really beautiful way of storytelling.
Have you thought, you know, like, my son, he loves theater, but, you know, he doesn't want to sing?
Yeah.
So many, you know, would you like to think about, you know, he always plays in the summer, the program that high school does, but our community center. Would you think, like, alternate the musical?
Yep, we'll always have a play during the school year as well. So our fall, as it stands right now, our fall production will never be a musical, it'll always be a play. Because, yeah, I have a lot of kids too who say, the minute you ask me to sing, I won't be interested. And then some who say, I just, that's all I want to do is sing. If it's not singing, I don't want to be in it. So that's why I think, yeah, yep, every year, would definitely want to do a play and a musical. Yeah.
Yeah, good question. Any other questions or comments for Anna?
Thank you, guys, for having me. Yeah.
So you said you graduated from Wasika in 2012, so what brought you back here?
Yeah.
What brought you back here? And how can we, how can we attract more of our graduates to come back to Wasika? Because we have so many outstanding kids out there, and we educate them, and off to the Twin Cities they go, and never to come back home again. How do we get these kids to come back, come back home?
Well, I don't want to take up all your time, but that question is probably what keeps me up at night, right? It's back when I first moved back, when I was working for Lead for Minnesota, Lead for America. That was kind of when I started to understand brain drain, right? That's the kind of tokenized word that it's been used. But that is something that I learned about and immediately said, that was me, that was me, right? I got out as far as I could. And then there are certain things I think you start realizing as you get older or as you learn more about what you love about doing and understanding that when we all leave our communities, what does that mean for, for those communities that are left behind, right? I think that there, yeah, lots of heady conversations, but, you know, there's a lot of talk about the migration of younger generations. And I think for me, going to a place with history can be hard for some people. And if that's not their, their path, that's absolutely fine. But I think focusing on smaller towns or communities that don't necessarily have all the funding or don't necessarily have all of the incoming migration, I think they still matter. I think that Wasika still matters. The kids that are growing up in our education system, like, matter so much. And I want to make sure that they look back on this time and go, I learned something and something that I can take with me the rest of my life, but also if I ever choose to come back, then I can come back and relay that on to the next generation. The kids that I'm working with right now, you know, if I had half of the kind of understanding or just a passion that they had when I was in high school, it's like, it would be completely different. They're, I tell myself a lot, like, the kids are going to be all right. They're, they're really a great bunch. And they're growing up in a world that is so different than when I graduated, and so different than when my parents did, when their parents did. And so, yeah, it's a, it's a big task to ask someone to come back to their hometown. But I think just to remember that, you know, they're the town that raised you. And if we, if we keep leaving, then, you know, there are a lot of things that also can, can go away with that. Big question. I'm so sorry for the answer.
Well, I do think that revitalizing something like our theater program in this town is something that makes us an attractive place to want to live and want to raise a family. And, and so I appreciate, well, I mean, there's a long history of theater in Wasika, but I appreciate you. I appreciate you coming in and, and taking that over and continuing that tradition and bringing new things to it. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And it fits the theme of our overall goals at our high school with our programming. When we think about, we're going to staff and offer classes that the kids are interested in. And so we're not going to just offer the same course schedule every single year, just because that's what we've always done. We're going to expand our offerings to see what the kids are interested in. And if they register for something other than what we're currently offering, we'll staff it. And then we won't staff something that they're not engaging in. We, of course, have our cores that we have to offer. But I think over time, what that does, the goal is anyway, to have the students spark a more interest in something that they really find engaging in high school, that they're connected to here in Wasika. Wasika was able to offer me that. And then maybe I, maybe I come back here or see that as home differently. And it's not about offering thousands of programs. You have to do what you do very well. But it is about responding to what the students want to do. So if we didn't have students who were taking part, participating, we wouldn't have the program. But we do, and so why not continue to make it vibrant? Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much, you guys.
Thank you, Anna. To run off to rehearsal now. All right, well, that was, that was awesome. So next, we had Savannah Zipoll?
Right, so Savannah is ill, unfortunately. But this time, I did think to pass the packets out before the meeting, so we didn't have our little chain of papers going around. So you do have her information here in the first few pages of your packet, starting with the national convention itinerary. So every year recently, our FFA has had the opportunity to go to the national convention. And that trip leaves the end of October. Savannah did not get the information from the, from the, and the itinerary prior to our last regular meeting to approve the, to approve the trip. And so, and you can see it leaves on October 25th, so it's going to be really tight to be for our next meeting when we actually approve it and when the trip's actually leaving. So in the interest of not making that seem like it was such a, yeah, cursory objective, we wanted to make sure we brought it to you this evening. So you have an idea to see, yep, we are planning and going. This is what the itinerary looks like. The students are excited as well as the staff. And so if you do have any questions or concerns, we would have the opportunity to address them prior to, you know, the trip moving forward as it is. But we just know that that timeline is pretty tight between approval and them leaving. And we didn't want to give the impression we were holding till the last minute like something was going on. So, but tonight, I just wanted to hand, give you these things. You can see there's lots of good sessions going on. It's always a great trip. You know, last year, I think it had to do with illness also. We never actually got a report back from, from FFA when they got back from the convention. So, so we'll be sure to get that, to get that on the agenda here coming up later in the winter here, after they get back with everything there. Our policies still, still do require us to approve these trips, which is very appropriate with that. In this case, because of the timing, we wanted to make sure it was at a work session. So you had the opportunity to ask questions if you had any.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, she happened to get sick this week and wasn't able to be here tonight. But you also are familiar with the trip.
Yes.
This is an awesome opportunity for leadership building skills for kids. It's amazing.
Yeah, and it's one of those organizations that our Southern Minnesota chapters, they do regularly work together anyway. But then to have that time away to focus on what they can do to collaborate is, there's some pretty exciting friendships that happen with other districts and other chapters.
Yeah, really cool. So the cost to the students is 800? Okay.
800, yes.
And how long are they gone for?
They will be leaving on the 25th and coming back on the 29th of October.
It's kind of an early, early time to leave, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, it's quite the ride, but it's a really packed couple of days for them too, not a lot of downtime.
They're seeing a lot, though.
They really are.
They really are.
Will they, will they travel with other groups in the region?
Yes. Yeah, typically what they do is, I apologize, I don't know the details on that, but typically they'll share, they'll share buses with our chapters just to make sure we fill a bus. Because some of the smaller districts may not have as many students, so they put them together.
Yeah.
And I did talk with Superintendent, we talked, it is in our policy to approve trips like this, but I suggested maybe at like our August meeting annually, we could just approve all of the planned trips for the year. And so that, so that's not a question mark, and it wouldn't have to be like a last-minute thing. And then, and then they could still come in and present on what their trip is going to be, knowing that we've already approved it. So, so I think, I think that might be, so I think that'd be good to go going forward.
The standard trips that happen annually, that makes sense. If something were to come up that's different, obviously, we would want to look at that as an individual situation.
Yeah, but I also think it might be a good way to start the school year, saying, oh, these are what the trips that are, that are planned. And I think that would be kind of a helpful thing. So, but, yeah, so that's next year, so. Well, yeah, I think that's, that's great. So we'll formally approve this at our next meeting, but obviously, I don't see any issue with them.
Yeah, having had the conversation tonight, we can share with Savannah, yep, yep, keep moving forward. Everything's fine. And you can tell at the end of this month, wheels are in motion already. But we certainly want to keep things going.
How many students are we talking about?
Boy, I think typically somewhere between 10 and 15 go in a given year.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, so moving on then to the 2022, 2023 vision cards.
All right, so exciting part of the meeting for me, the vision cards for this year. But no, I think that as we've worked for this through the last year plus, and Elizabeth, correct, could give some feedback on this too, as appropriate. I think we've really taken the vision card concept and embraced it as a district and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable for what we want to achieve based on the objectives. Like, I gave you a copy of our strategic plan. Really, those objectives are what we're trying to measure. And, you know, we've been through this before, but just for the sake of, of iteration, you know, it's, it's not enough to report on that we are working on these things. It really is about, well, how are we really doing on what we have, have happening for the, for the specific last few years? And so we've been able to then use the 21, 22 vision cards that we just completed to say, some things worked really well, some things didn't measure as well as we thought they were going to. We were successful in some things, some things we need to still work on, but what can we learn from that? And so really, as we look at the 22, 23 vision card, the emphasis on this strategic plan is, is high and it's very heavy prioritizing with student achievement, as well it should. And so we have five measures and vision statements in the area of the student achievement. And kindergarten readiness, keeping that going, reading at grade level by third grade. Those are two World's Best Workforce items, as well as graduation rate, working through with that, with that. Choosing the, closing the achievement gap, and of course, we want to outperform state averages on some of those standardized tests. So what we've done this year, because we have the data to do it, is we've been able to take the baseline from this school year, take the information from this school year. And really, we're not just shooting at some arbitrary number. We were able to say, this is our gap. This is how far below the state average we are on, in math. This is what we need to do. We need to reduce that gap by, you know, by a big percentage or eliminate it altogether, you know, in the upcoming years. Couple of things that I want to just clarify for you is that because we ran into the challenge last year with my evaluation of some of these things aren't, aren't done yet, we are, we modified a couple of them. So kindergarten readiness was one of those wait-till-fall type measures, okay? And so we've, we've done it, what we've done is we've backed it up a year, just like we do for graduation rates. So we have, we'll have information for you at the end of this school year, based on how this school year went for that piece too. So 83% was our baseline for last year. We would expect this year to be, hopefully, 87, if not 90%, for our, our kindergarten readiness. We also added for kindergarten readiness, we thought, we wanted something a little bit more objective and standardized, so our fast bridge early reading, we're going to implement here for our kindergarteners as well. And we know that at right now, 57% of our kindergarteners are coming in above that 30th percentile. And 30th percentile is a specific, it's chosen for a specific reason. Because if you're above the 30th percentile, you're considered to be low or no risk of falling behind grade level. And so even though 30th percentile may be a little bit misleading, if you're under the 30th percentile, you're considered to be at risk for not being on grade level as you proceed. So our goal would be to get up above that, make progressive growth above that 30th percentile. Similar to the fast bridge reading in third grade, that's why that 30th percentile is there. A few things then, just another thing to point out. We want to focus on our four-year graduation rate, because that's the rate that the district really is assessed on. It's the four-year overall graduation rate. We know that's made up of some of our junior high, high school students, you know, it's made up of some of our area learning center students. But we have to focus on what we get reported on, which is our, our graduation rate as a district, and then we tell our story in the layers behind that. We know then that there also are five, six, and seven-year rates that we're going to be looking at. So this will filter down to our junior high, high school and our ALC. So our ALC and our high school, in their vision cards, they will also set goals for five- and six-year graduation rates. But we don't need to complicate the district vision card with that particular measure. ALC, we also put a goal of 65% as vision. That's, that's again, for a specific purpose. 65% four-year graduation rate or higher at an ALC is considered successful in the new North Star Accountability System. So, you know, our, our area learning center is achieving, is receiving some support from MDE because we are lower than the 65%, which is also, is every ALC in the state. That's a different conversation for a different day. But that's why 65% is the goal there. Because that gets you to the place where that's deemed a successful ALC for your four-year rate, you know, that sort of thing. Achievement gaps, I think, are a little bit more self-explanatory when it comes to MCAs on state average. And our, our two largest groups of students of color are black students and our Hispanic students with that. Interestingly enough, in this year, our black students, percentage-wise, was higher in proficiency in reading than our all-student group. And so we hope that maintains or stays close to that for everything there. That's all, we know there's layers below that, behind that, of who the students are and what our student groups look like and that sort of thing. But we want to make sure that gap is something we... And those are all World's Best Workforce items that we're addressing. In the area of student support, last year, we, we focused on trying to increase participation in breakfast, making sure students started off their day with a, with a, with a healthy start to their day. We served on average 377 breakfasts each day last year. And we'd like to hopefully be able to maintain or increase that a little bit. What is an interesting dynamic this year is if you recall, the, the free meals have now gone away. And so last year, eating breakfast did not cost the students any, anything. And so this year, it does cost, you know, free or do students, obviously, not. But full-pay students do have to pay for breakfast now if they choose to do that. So we left it on here, not because it's a particular concern, but because we really want to use that, we wanted that, that information to be front and center in how is our food service department having to respond to now students having to pay for meals again? What's that doing? And so we should expect to see probably this week or next, the September counts for what we served for meals. And we should get a chance to know where that came from our baseline. So we want to put it on there as a goal to make sure we're maintaining that. And Fernbrook Services, again, we want to continue to support social, emotional, and mental health services for students. We also only have so much control over that because of the staff that Fernbrook has to offer. But if we are seeing that go down to 40 students, for example, that would be a big red flag for us to find out how else are we going to provide those services for students? If this maintains, then we know students, for the most part, are getting the help they need. And if it, if it varies significantly, that's a big indicator for us that something isn't happening for some kids. We want to get that going. So that's the purpose for leaving it on there. Again, not necessarily an issue, but a measure for us. Any questions on the front page? Should I turn it over? Yeah.
For the achievement gap goal, so what, is it all grade levels that, that take the MCAs? Is that where the achievement gaps numbers come from? Or is it just, or like, where?
Yeah, so this is based on all students who take that assessment. Then each individual building may, on their vision card, drill that down to specific grade level goals. But that wouldn't be on the district vision card.
Right. But it's every, everyone, regardless of what grade, and then this is our gap for the district?
Correct.
But not, not everybody takes this test, because seniors don't.
Right, but everybody who takes the test.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just like third grade or just eighth grade or something like that.
This is for, with the, with the exception of the measure two there, that's obviously just third grade.
Right.
But the other, other two, measure four and five here, those are everyone who takes the test.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Very good. Questions?
Yeah.
So on the back, the workforce piece, community partnerships has been something we've been working on the last few years. And, you know, I think what we found was this was really a, this was a wishy-washy measure, for lack of a better word. We listed the people we worked with and who they were and what they did. And we thought, it doesn't really impact a school district to have 100 partners if you don't really clearly know what each partner does with you. And so working, working on right now is, for example, this particular partner, we send student interns for them for work-based learning. And we, that's the partnership. This particular partnership, we go and tour their work, their work site twice a year. This particular partner, they come in and speak to our Avid classes. And so that's our goal for this year, and Kerry Watt is really leading the charge on that, of identifying not just the volume of partners, to say we have a volume of partners, but what do they actually do? And can they really, could they articulate to you? If you were to ask them in the community, oh, you're a partner with a school district, what does that mean? So that sort of thing. And right now, we have, we have 20 partnerships roughly that we're able to just say, okay, yeah, we're really clear. But they, we work with a lot more than that. But these are the ones we're really clear with. And the idea is to continue to increase that so that we can say, we know what the partnership looks like. That's the purpose for that one. Because otherwise, it just gets to be a list. And what does it really mean? Not a whole lot. Always working on, I know it's one thing that keeps Elizabeth up at night, of course, speaking of that, always working on filled positions, trying to keep things working. And really, we're, we're, we're starting this year, I would say, in a better spot than we have the last two years, certainly. But we still have some unfilled positions that are ongoing. You know, we're, we are looking at, I think one clarifier here is, we're going to have turnover. We're going to have some staff that turns over all the time. But we're emphasizing here for this measure are those unfilled positions that just sit, that just don't fill. School-age care right now would be our primary example of that, that we just don't have anything that's really going into that. You know, the, the behavior intervention teacher, which hopefully is sealed up here shortly, you know, that was open for a while, but we filled it. But it wasn't with those perpetual, perpetual openness there. So we continue to work on that. Very good. Community engagement. We think about working through how we engage the community. And, you know, each department and building completed a communication plan this fall. And this is a new measure for us, so we don't have a baseline here. But what our goal is that, as I think through that and I read through everyone's plans, I think through how wonderful that sounds in August. And then I think through, how often do you go back and look at that plan? If you're not prompted to say, we're, we're going to be held accountable to this plan. So I was just looking at mine the other day as I was preparing our next topic for tonight, and thinking, if we don't get back to that, we don't stick with it, then all of a sudden, it just becomes a piece of paper that's out on my desk. And so we're going to measure that. And we're going to start with, I, I hope it's more like 100%, but we're going to start with the realistic progress that at least 75% of what you said you were going to do on that communication plan gets done as effectively as you thought you were going to do it. And then hopefully, 90% or even more. And then hopefully ninety percent or even more with that. Because we hope that everything on those plans was something that is so much of, of value that they're going to actually happen. And so we're going to measure that to find out how that will work. You know, and it is, it's a reference. It's a reference to be able to say, I, I need to, I need to do that, I need to communicate about that. And, and not the day before it happens, you know, that sort of thing, working through that. And then the webmaster analytics, one thing that, we're going to leave that on again for this year because, you know, if you, if you remember from last year, that seven thousand three hundred ninety-seven per month was significantly down from the year before. And what we are unclear about is if we were really high the year before, because we were in the middle of COVID and distance learning and all that thing going on. Or if, or if this is, so is this, is this normal or is this really down? And so we'll keep it on here as a, as a measure, hoping to increase the value of our website. People can find information on it and find out whether they knew our school. But also because we have to really see what the norm is, the new norm, if you want to call it that. Because during distance learning and during the pandemic, I, anecdotally, I would anticipate people were checking the website more than they might be during quote-unquote "normal" school years, even just the general public. What is the school district doing? So hopefully, we'll continue to, to see some success and increase there with that. I think the continued work that we're doing with our teams to communicate effectively on the website is, is still a work in progress, but it's only getting better and continues to make that a more positive, positive place for us. The last two measures, academic programs and teaching and learning. We moved, we moved the exit surveys and postgraduate survey from achievement down to academic programs. And because if you think about, if you look at the objectives that are in academic programming, so eight-point-one through eight-point-five, it's all about affecting, you know, creating comprehensive career pathways, providing flexible environment, providing professional development to gain awareness, standard-based. How are we going to know if we're effective with those things? Well, we'll know if we're effective if our kids tell us they're prepared.
Yeah.
And so, and the student achievement measures are all assessments. They all fit a theme there. And that student survey was kind of an outlier, didn't really fit that theme there. So last year, we had flexibility of classrooms, and it just wasn't a, a firm enough measure for us to be as successful as we wanted it to be. And so the exit survey, we have a baseline, want to continue to get better with that. The postgraduate survey, that's the one that happens, I think it's three years after they've been out, three or five, remember that, they've been out. And last year, the, we, we got seventy, we've been getting seventy-five percent responses on those, of students responding. So it's still a valuable measure to us. And that is almost more valuable than to tell us how kids really feel several years after they left our school, like Anna was sharing, versus they, they graduate in that June, they all feel great. Or they don't, or they don't because they just think that's whatever it is. And I didn't put it all here, but the, the actual question on that survey is prepared for life in general. And so we'll see if they feel like they're prepared as they move forward. But I think that helps us measure that. And then the teaching and learning measure, that's a new measure for this year, is we want to make sure that our high-quality and relevant professional development. So we're, we're not just sharing things with, with our staff because we feel like that's something that was exciting to us. Today, we went to a workshop, and now we should share that with everybody on our staff. Is it really relevant? Is it really going to be high-quality? And as perceived by our staff?
Yep.
That's, that's the key measure here. So we're going to implement a thirty-day feedback loop on all of our professional days. And so we'll be sending out a survey to all of our staff thirty days after a professional development activity, professional day, to say, was that activity relevant? Have you used that in your classroom? And just a two or three, so it's not going to be cumbersome. Just so we can see, was that actually a valuable thing to spend our time on?
Yep.
Because I think we, we have to make sure that we're not, we're not getting too caught up in the idea de jour, what's going on with everything. We have to make sure we stay to what's, what's our core practices. And our staff's going to tell us that. Is it really relevant to instruction? And I feel like thirty days will give them a good chance to implement or at least reflect on what we've got from our PD, and then tell us if that was relevant to them or not. And so I think that'll be a great way to measure kind of that teaching and learning goal for, for our strategic plan. So I'm excited about it. I think it shaped up, we were in DLT on Monday, and we spent about half an hour on it in small groups, trying to carve this out. And it wasn't nearly enough time. It was, I mean, so I think the team was pretty engaged in it. And I think they're excited to take it into their next steps, which is now how their building and department filters out of this. But, but I'm, I think it's going to also give us, you as board members, but us as administrators, the opportunity to say, you know, the old adage, what gets measured gets done. Here we go. And I don't want to be below state average on things. And so we're going to put this on here, right? And I, I want to make sure that what we're doing is relevant to teachers, to our staff, our PD, that kind of thing. We want to make sure kids are getting the right, proper nutrition. So we're prioritizing what we think is important. And so I would welcome questions or thoughts or feedback. Obviously, the board, any input you have on this is super valuable, and, and go from there.
I really liked the last goal with the research, the tracking of the, the professional development. We do that at my work. And you can go to workshops, but is it purposeful? Is it, are you going to use it in your job? So that's a huge one. I think that's a really great one.
Well, and I think we, we've made a big point of carving out these days every month, and to make sure that they are valuable, I think is, I think that's a good tool, just to make sure that we're, that we're using.
Definitely.
We're using the time properly and, and usefully, so, yeah. Is, are you getting feedback for all, all staff professional development or just, okay. So, because I mean, obviously, all, all of your groups are doing something a little different on those days.
With all staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. And our district is not really in, in this place, but we could be, we could be vulnerable to some PD getting a little bit thin because we have contractual language that says PD can go towards lane change. And so sometimes it gets a little bit of, I just want to stretch to take that extra thing. It's only kind of relevant, so I get the lane change. And so we want to make sure we continue to emphasize good quality time. We don't want our staff spending time on things that aren't going to support their learning and their growth in their kids.
And both that one and the post-graduation one right before, it's, we're measuring that based on the people who are getting it and who is relevant for it.
Yeah. I, I think so much of our measure, so much of our measurement time is usually spent on something we can control. And so the vulnerability as a leader, to be able to say, this success is based on someone else's perception. That, I think, is, that's how we lead. That's how we lead, by making sure that we have influence over them. If we provide high-quality PD, for example, or, or experience, so our kids feel prepared, that's real life. And that's how we make really appropriate changes, and not just a change that we think is knee-jerk based on the. And some of this, I have to admit, is, is some of my, some of my learning in my doctorate coming through, about education being really good at finding things that correlate, but don't really, there's not really causation. It correlates, but it's not really the cause. It could, you could, so we, we tend to change academic programming because some scores correlated based on using this particular book. But did it really cause it? Do we really know that? And so asking some interesting questions about our PD is a, is some provocative research we can do within our work. So I'm, I'm getting wordy there with that, but I think this is an exciting strategic, or vision card.
Absolutely.
It's innovative.
The communication plans, how often are those, are those determined in the summer preparing for the fall? So each building, you said each building has our communication plan, that kind of once a year, that's?
Yeah, so they, so they submitted it, and we, we all created them and submitted them basically to each other by the end of August. And then actually, this year being a, any, you know, in all of our goal-setting years with our goal-setting meetings with administrators, we'll be talking about it in every meeting, when I have my goal-setting meetings with them.
Yeah, Dr. Miller mentioned his communication plan at our PTO meeting last night. But just simple things like continuing the blog that he's done over the last year or so. And then he talked about hoping to get a monthly newsletter out. So I'm going to guess those are some of the things that he had in his overall plan. But I'm sure each, each building has something similar, communication tools like that, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. It holds yours, it, it holds ourselves, you know, as well as to each other.
Yeah.
I've got just a thought on the workforce. You know, we talk about trying to fill open positions. Just thinking down the road, could we ever have a vision card for retaining employees? How well we do at retaining staff? And for those that leave, for whatever reason, we know why?
Right, so actually, we do have an exit survey that we do. And that's actually part of our objectives here, is to develop that plan. And so the answer is yes. And where the retention lands is with the business office vision card. So that's where that lands. So as, as Elizabeth's working with her team on how her vision card kind of feeds into this, then like a retention rate could be an option to be considered for that card. When I was, when I was in, in the HR department in Mankato, retention was on my vision card that then fed up to the district vision card.
It all works very well together. I mean, they bounce off of each other. You can engage teachers, their teaching in the classroom increases, and then the kid's excitement goes on. So hopefully, that's helping with scores and everything, so it's very simple.
Right, and, and the long-term ulterior motive here is as we're developing these measures that actually are valuable and they mean something, when we go to look at the next strategic plan, we'll already have a, a head start on that because we've already known what on this plan really works well and what doesn't. But to meet our current needs, it was, it was the right thing at the right time. Now, five years later, how we evolved.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Yeah, I appreciate constantly keeping our strategic plan like right in front of us. Like it's really, and this system that you developed really helps with that, so, yeah.
I think, I think one thing, one thing I like about it too is it's a living document that can be changed, adapted over time. But it's, I mean, this stuff is all part of Wasika Public Schools. I mean, we're, we're living this every day. We have schools, so it's a good thing.
Takes some comfort, time to get as familiar with the process. But now, I think, once we're there, it just continues to become more, more and more valuable.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments about the vision cards for the year?
Anything you'd add on that?
The only thing I would add is I just think it's been an extremely healthy process for all of us. And, and I will say, for me, I think it's definitely pushed me maybe, I'll even say out of my comfort zone, because we haven't always had these conversations before. And I'd say even for, for myself and, and the staff that I work with, having these very intentional conversations about how does our department truly feed to the success of the district as a whole. I think it's really helping us all have ownership in, in the goals that, that are not just, you know, set outside of, of, you know, made at a high level, it's how do we all have input and how can we all feed into the success of our district? So I think they've been really good conversations. And, and again, it's, it's a growing process. So it might be a little clunky at first, but, but we're getting there, and it's going to become second habit for us eventually, so, yeah.
I, I can already tell that this year's vision cards seem like you guys are so much more confident with them this year than what you were last year. I can always, I can already tell it's been a year into the process, and everyone's fully on board, and, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
They understand more of what goes into, to making this.
Yep. Awesome. Well, thank you for that. There's no, nothing further? We can move on then to our last item for the workshop tonight, fall community engagement.
Yeah, and, and thank you. And that will be just the last document you have as part of your packet. And I'm not going to necessarily read this to you, every single item. But you know, if you recall, late in the summer, we talked about creating an engagement plan to help continue to communicate with our community about what is happening with facilities, what is happening right now with our, with our long-term facility maintenance, what's happening with Hartley, what's happening with our budgeting, that sort of thing. And so we have been moving on that, on that process here. And this first month was a lot of, a lot of kind of getting things in place, getting things rolling. But things really start to come full throttle here in the next few weeks. And so I, we mentioned, I know members of the committee mentioned at our last meeting, the facility committee did meet to talk through some of these kind of four sets of, of talking points that we were going to be looking through. Kind of the, here is the, what's the status of, of Hartley, for example, was our first thing. Then, you know, what are some options that we're looking at? Then we're looking at, you know, how are schools funded for maintenance? And how do districts do this? And then is there a decision to be made? What are we doing next? Kind of those four pieces. And so as you, as you see, September's been some meet and greets. I had an opportunity, I, I only add the Ministerial Association on here because that was a very productive conversation with some community leaders in our clergy about, we recognize there's a need. We recognize there's some financial challenges to that. So we really can respect how that's a challenging conversation to have. We have to do something at some point, right? That sort of thing. Site Logic, I've mentioned them before. We've shared some communication plans with them, the facility messaging goals. Just curious to see what they come back with. We have, I think I meet with them next, next week, see what they have. We're not waiting for them to do anything, but if they have anything to offer that's a value add, we certainly will consider that. I was hoping to have something from them prior to now, but I haven't yet. And so we just have decided to go with what we can do with that. So you can see here, next week will be my October article in the county news and the Pioneer. I'm going to kind of lay out what I just talked about. You're going to be seeing some, some communication the next few months about facilities. Here's the purpose of it, really to just inform the community that this is a decision the board's been talking about for a couple of years now. And we want to make sure that the community is caught up on the conversation. You know, not necessarily in the sense of we're asking them to make a decision. We've already been through some of those things, through surveys and task forces. But right now, we, we need the community to then, by the end of this calendar year at, at least, be on the same page as the board is in terms of what they know. And that's kind of what we're, we're going to be sharing in the next few months. Through the district newsletters, through social media, district communication. I'm going to be doing some videos, some kind of some commercials with some of these kind of things, or just kind of interviews, or I mean, informational pieces. Just to kind of mix up the media a little bit, so it's not all in print, and to make it as accessible as we can. The October newsletter, we should have prepared, we should have complete by the beginning of next week. And then it'll be as quickly as we can print them and mail them. That will be a mailing, based on that survey response we got this spring, of people preferring to have things in their mailbox. I'm going to respond to that with this first newsletter. And my piece will be about facilities, but we've got PTO, we've got the school board, we'll have some contribution. Each building has a, has an article. It should be about a, about a two-page or front and back. So it should be a pretty good, nice layout. And then we'll be just working our way through the items that are kind of listed out date by date on the bottom of your sheet, which are kind of those recurring items, those coffee with the superintendents, my monthly articles, kind of the timeline that we talked about earlier, earlier in the meeting, earlier in the, on the page. So it is, it is there, and it's kind of starting to get, to get into full throttle. And I wanted to make sure that this was an opportunity to share with you what the board had charged us to work on. Yep, here it goes, we're working on this for now. So I would ask, answer any questions you have. Otherwise, it's more of just an opportunity to know that there is action to what we talked about.
So how did your September twenty-third coffee with the superintendent go? Tell us about that.
Well, it was, it was more like a coffee, one-on-one with the superintendent, with the one individual that came. But you know, it was, it was positive in the sense that, you know, we had an opportunity to talk to a community member, and he had several questions. And some were concerns, but more were just interested in, how does this really work? And how do you really do? So the example, the questions he asked about were security. He asked about some curriculum planning. He asked about funding. He wasn't aware of how the levy process worked and, and how we get funded for that. How much of our budget is that? How it impacts our, our overall revenue source? But it was, it was, happened to be just one individual, but we were at, I was at McDonald's that morning. And I, I would also say though, that while sitting there, I probably got approached by four or five other people that I knew who were just happened to be there. Just came over and we visited for a few seconds while we were there. And I thought what was most positive for the next time is the county pioneer paper was there. And so I don't actually know if he actually ever printed anything, I didn't have a chance to see that.
I think it was in last week.
Okay. Yeah, and so hopefully, there'll be some more advertising for the next time to get going. You know, and I kind of read that, but as the fact that it wasn't a big crowd, there really isn't something right now that we are, really have as a, a sell point. It's, and there was, it hasn't been an issue that we're trying to really correct or work through. I mean, one of the questions- I mean, one of the questions Eli asked was, do districts do this a lot? I said, well, yes, lots of districts do it, but usually it's in response to something, an issue they're having in their district, or they have something they're trying to promote. Or, and right now, this is just a proactive, kind of just a, how can we continue to get to know people type conversation? So it doesn't, it doesn't, didn't shock me that it was a super small crowd, it wasn't. But I also know that Friday morning at 9:00 isn't the best. So I don't have included on here, but I've got two Saturdays targeted, I think, November, the first Saturday in November, I think, and then I think it's the first Saturday in December also I've got targeted to offer those during the weekend too, which might be more manageable for some folks, so.
I have a suggestion, maybe instead of coffee with the superintendent, it should be steak dinner with the superintendent. Or shrimp, or walleye, barbecue ribs.
No, but I thought it was, it was positive, and, you know, had the opportunity to connect with a few folks, and was, it's important to provide the space, you know, and then if people don't choose to use it, then what do you do, right? It's a second option, so.
I'm assuming the further we get into this facility, just, yes, it would, we would have a meeting for the public specifically on whatever this, would that be closer to us planning on it, when to go out for?
Yes.
Okay. It's like right now, it'd be kind of premature to do any of that right now.
It would be, because I think we need to catch the public up to where the board is.
Sure.
It's not about the board backing up, I think it's just catching the public up to where the board's brain is.
Yep.
And then have that decision at that time.
And your October newsletter will kind of catch people up, yeah.
Yeah, with that, so that'll be good.
Cool. Great. Well, yeah, I appreciate seeing this on, I like to read, I like to see it on paper. So I appreciate having it listed like this, so, yeah, I think it's a good plan, and yeah.
Well, it, just like any communication plan, or any engagement plan, if you don't, if you don't plan it.
Yep.
Then it catches up on you pretty quick.
Yep.
And so I think we're in a position right now as a district to put some real action into that facility conversation, whatever the decision ends up being. But now it's time to get to that point and get caught up.
Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments? Awesome. All right. Well, our next meeting is Thursday, October 27th, so make note that this is a week later than our usual meeting, so. And then our buildings, our meetings will continue to be here in the second floor conference room at Central Building. If, you can watch it on Facebook, you're allowed, please come in person. We invite the public to attend our meetings, we've got lots of seats available. And if, but you can also send comments, questions, concerns to wasikadistrict@gmail.com, and I can read them at a meeting as well, so. Otherwise, I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.